Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for coming this evening. This is the October 26, 2016 Merrimack Zoning Board of Adjustment Meeting. We are, the next meeting is going to be on November 30, 2016. I'll ask that everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Tony, if you could lead us, please.
Sure.
My question leads to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, good evening. For the benefit of those who have not attended these hearings, the procedure is as follows. The petitions will be heard in order that, in the order that they are posted in the legal notice. However, the Chair may change the order with consent of the Board to expedite the public hearing as appropriate. The Board will treat all petitioners, their representatives, abutters, and other interested parties fairly and with respect. We allow each petitioner to state why his or her petition should be granted. Following the petitioner's statement, any abuter or interested party is allowed to speak for or against the petition. In the interest of getting all the facts, we will go around a second time. The Board may elicit testimony at any point, but we cannot allow for cross-discussion. All questions must be directed to the Board. Also, we ask that you do not repeat yourself, or your, we also ask that you do not repeat yourself or your neighbor's testimony. If you wish just to indicate concurrence, please do so. After hearing all the facts regarding a petition, the Chairman will close the public hearing, and the Board will deliberate and vote on the petition before moving on to the next. You can expect fairness and impartiality by this Board. The zoning Board is empowered to legalize the breaking of the town zoning ordinance, and this is not done lightly. State law and local ordinances are set out, have set out the criteria that must be met in order for, or this Board to grant your petition. I remind you that it is your responsibility to prove your case so that this Board has justification for granting the petition. The minimum requirements are listed in the form you receive from the Community Development Office, and it would be helpful to, if you proceed on this basis. We ask you to please turn off all your pagers. For whoever will be speaking tonight on a petition, for, against, or in regards to a petition, you please rise to be sworn in. If you're going to be speaking tonight, you need to raise your hand. Raise your right hand. Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you very much. The first petition this evening is Chad Brannon, P.E. of Fieldstone Land Consultants, P.L.L.C. petitioner, and Brett W. Vaughn, Revocable Trust Owner, variances under Section 3.02 of the zoning ordinance to permit a 11-lot subdivision with a lot, with a lot within an area of 89,733 square feet, whereas 100 square feet is required. A lot with a frontage of 107.80 feet, whereas 250 feet is required. A lot of frontage of 75 feet, whereas 250 feet is required. And a lot of, a lot eight with 89.20 feet, whereas 250 feet is required. The parcel is located at 123 Wilson Hill Road in the R1 Residential District by zoning map, tax map for a lot 023, case number 2016-32, 33, 34, and 35. This is continued from the September 28, 2016 meeting. The zoning Board will, it will be voting on all four cases. Lot 2016, 32, 33, 34, and 35 will be voting. That will be one vote. We're not going to vote individual case. We're going to do one vote.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question, if I could. Jillian, on the agenda, this is, I lost it here. Hold on a second. I thought it said 11 houses, and on the memorandum it says 12 houses.
It should be a 12-lot subdivision.
12 lot, okay.
One's existing.
Right.
One lot already had, pardon me, one lot already, already has a house on it.
Oh, okay.
That's, like, 11 new.
That's why I was questioning that.
Yes, that's why you're a bit confused.
Attorney Michael, before you start, just, for the record, I'm going to swear in Lenny as a standing member tonight, as Lynn is absent. So, Lenny, you're on the clock. Attorney Michael, if you will, please.
Thank you. Just for the record, I know there are four members. Would we want to proceed with four? I'm just, you didn't announce that.
We're, we're, well, you have, we have a quorum, so.
Well, you have a quorum of three.
Well, okay, so we have four.
I'm proceeding with the four members. Thank you. As you pointed out, this particular situation or variance requests involves some areas of, an area off Wilson Hill Road, approximately 60 acres in size. And the boundary is kind of what you see here. It does not include these lots on Wilson Hill Road. It comes like this, 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 over, around, down. There's over 500 feet of frontage on Wilson Hill Road. There's an existing dwelling owned by the applicant up in the far, kind of westerly, northwesterly corner of the lot. The proposal here is to create the 11 new lots. That's why you see 11, but it's a 12-lot subdivision, because the 12th has the house currently on it, by bringing a cul-de-sac into the area that I'm showing you. The issue, and I'll point this out, arises with Lot 2 slightly less than the, I believe that's, which was it, Lot?
It's Lot 1.
Lot 1 is the one that has slightly less acreage on it right here. There's significant frontage on the road, as well as on the cul-de-sac. The other three lots in question, the lots, as you can see on the cul-de-sac, I would point out that they quickly widen, and there are no other variances required. Those lots are fairly large, 2.34, 2.3, 2.38. They will otherwise meet all of the zoning requirements as it relates to this particular proposal. This plan has gone to the Planning Board. They had some suggestions. And I would point out at the outset that if I show you Plan, I believe this is Plan C, you can see that Lot 1, we could have put a gore into Lot 2 and not required the lot size adjustment. The Planning Board said, "That doesn't really accomplish anything. If you're going to be going to the zoning Board to discuss frontage, we respectfully suggest that you talk to the Board about that as well. We think it makes for a better-looking plan." The lot is, this lot would then be, quote, "legal," but we believe and agree with the Planning Board that it makes more sense to request us a slight variance for the lot and allow it to look in the, in the fashion that was shown in the plan that's been submitted to you. I just want to point that out. This will be serviced by Wells and Septic. The remaining lot will be over 30 acres in size. And my client plans to create, I need to go to one more plan to show you this, a conservation easement. We expect all of this will remain open space. We don't know that for a fact, but we expect it will based upon the soils and slopes. My client, in deference to his neighbors, and he's spoken to most of his neighbors about this plan, was another suggestion, and I certainly encouraged it, to show them this, to describe what it is, agreed to pull these lots back from the existing housing here that you see, the existing homes, and create not only open space, but our plan is to put a conservation easement over this area, over eight acres, to bar any, any use, any buildings, any structures, tree cutting, and keeping that a further open buffer to these abutters. And we think that that makes sense. This is a rather unique parcel because of the way the rectangular shape of it in relation to the roads, in relation to the, what, little, what area there is in relation to the slopes. It allows us to make this adjustment and assure the abutters that, in fact, this area will remain open in perpetuity and won't be developed or otherwise used. The Planning Board also, we discussed the possibility of a cluster, which, again, would allow some smaller lots, significant open space, but we believe that because of the open space we're already providing, the Planning Board felt that it was better to go with conventional parcels. And we think that was a good call, and we've done that, except for the one lot that I pointed out, that the Planning Board, Planning Board suggested it would be better to be the size that we're, we're making it. The elements of the variance are certainly clear, but I want to point out, there's one other factor that's afloat in this particular request. And that factor is, is the applicant could do things, how do I put this politely, and I don't mean to be impolite, and I've been to the Board before with plans like this. We could, we could do it without you. We don't want to do it without you. We think better planning means these variances, which are really minimal variances. You know, the paintbrushes I mentioned for zoning is a big brush. Sweep it across and hope everything works out. But in this instance, I've got to show you a couple more plans, just to, just to highlight the point that I'm making. This is what we've called Plan C. We'll get to Plan B. This particular plan is somewhat similar to what you've seen, but note, there is no open buffer space. Please note that. But we've made the lots all proper, all proper frontage, all proper size. We wouldn't need a variance. What happens is we lose a little open space, because we're going to bring this road in, it's going to be longer. We're going to do this loop that you see to create frontage. Really, doesn't amount to hill of beans and the stone. You can see the lots are still kind of pyramid-shaped, the large lots, but we could bring it in, sweep it around, make it work. But because of the way the layout would then be, because of slopes and other things, at that point, we're going to lose some of the buffering that I've shown you in the other plan. The first plan's the better plan, and the neighbors felt it was the better plan, and we feel it's the better plan. But to do that plan, we need you. There's one more plan. You know, some people say, "The developers are just in it for the money, and that's all they want, just chop up lots and do what they can." My client happens to live here, and it would be possible for him to get another five or six lots, increase the lots, and make it conforming with a through road. We don't like the through road. Wilson Hill Road is one of the few scenic roads in New Hampshire, designated scenic road. And we believe that by creating a through road in this area, people would be cutting through. It makes it more attractive. It, it kind of diminishes, if you will, the, I, I call it the intimate nature of this particular subdivision with the 11 new lots. We expect it to be very nice. It's a nice parcel of land. I'm sure the Board is familiar with it. But this is a way where we could get more lots. We'd increase the road. You'd get little or no open space. We're just going to grid it out, you know, just grid the thing out to make it work and make the lots appropriately sized in frontage and not make them funny-looking lots. We don't want to do that. We don't want to do that either. What we want to do is we want to do this. But, again, it requires a variance. And it's important. What's important to me is, thank goodness that since Simplex, we've modified the hardship criteria to look at what's reasonable, what makes sense. You know, what can we do to help plan things in a way that doesn't muck up the works? Because the other two plans, we think, aren't the best way to go. But we need you to do it. Now, back, when we had the Gray Rocks era, most of you folks weren't on the Board at that time, Governor Zylin case, the court pretty much said, "Yeah, if you can do something with it without the zoning Board, that's what you have to do." It's not the case today. Thank goodness. Thank goodness it isn't the case. Let's go through the criteria. Not contrary to the public interest. Let's look at what the courts have talked about in the general gist of this. None of you have heard it before, you hear it every night, you kind of, I hope you're not too bored with it, but we have to at least go through it for the record. Does it alter the essential character of the neighborhood? No, it doesn't. Does it, no, it doesn't. This is a residential zone, proposing residential houses, that other than the three frontage and the size, size that I'm talking about, which really are insignificant in the scheme of things, this otherwise meets zoning. You know, it's not contrary to the public interest. You know, it's a residential proposal in a residential area off Wilson Hill. I would point out that on Wilson Hill, there are a number of lots that aren't, you know, more than 100,000 square feet, and many of them have less than 250 feet of frontage. And, you know, those folks have gotten along just fine. Those lots work quite well, and we think that this particular proposal will, will as well. Will it threaten the health, safety, or general welfare of the public? Of course it won't. We'll get state and town-approved septics. The site design will meet all the local and state requirements. It has to go to the Planning Board for them to review drainage, traffic, and any other issues that might be of concern to the town as it relates to this relatively small subdivision. We would point out that this particular design, Design A, as I call it, has less road, few lots than other proposals, and quite frankly, makes for a very, very nice subdivision on this parcel of land. We believe that the land will be developed in a way that best preserves the open space, as I've shown you, maintains, you know, the essential ordinance requirements, and clearly is not contrary to the public interest. Does the Board have any questions on that criteria?
What, and maybe you touched upon it, maybe I missed upon it, when you were showing the plans. Why, why 11? Why not five, six? Why, why, why is, why, what came to that magic number? I'm just kind of curious, because it, like you said, if you say you did six lots, you wouldn't have, we wouldn't be sitting here having this conversation, because you'd have the frontage and all of that.
We could, we could get 11 lots. I, you know, we can 11 lots and not be here. What we're trying to do is develop a better plan. I think my client's entitled to make reasonable uses of, of his land. It's a large parcel. I think, you know, another 11 lots on 60 acres is certainly not a unreasonable request. It's a, we think, a viable, proper use of the property. It's very reasonable.
Okay.
You know, to say five lots, I think that's, in some respects, unreasonable, to be quite candid, and that's my answer to you. We, we can do 11.
Right, I know, without, without being here.
And I don't want to do that. That's why we're, we're here. We want to be here.
I was just wondering if there was something that got us to that specific magic number?
It, it works well.
Okay.
It's simply stated.
Okay.
No, it's all right. Any other questions about that? Apparently not. Spirit of the ordinance. Again, let's look at the size of the parcel, size of the lots, placement of the lots, which I think makes for an intimate subdivision, the way the cul-de-sac is designed. The intent of the ordinance is to provide separation and buffering from adjacent lots. We, we don't have that issue in any way, shape, or form here. If I squared off those lots for you, like I showed you on Plan C, that next plan, it, it doesn't really do anything, because the lots are all better than two acres in size. With the available land, again, we can accomplish the goals of frontage without 250 feet of frontage for each lot. It reduces road development. It, it reduces the amount of road that, that is in the subdivision. Again, it creates additional open space. We think the lot design, lot design allows more than adequate lot access. That's certainly not an issue. You don't need, you know, 250 feet of frontage for a driveway to access a lot. And we think that the principal frontage goal is certainly maintained and satisfied. As I pointed out, there are many lots in the area that are certainly less than 250 feet of frontage. And, again, we think it remains perfectly suitable for the single-family residential plan that we've got. In all other respects, size and setback will be observed. And I'd point out, you know, when we look at frontage, think of the clusters in Merrimack. We've got some very nice clusters. This Board has helped approve several of those clusters by needed variances. And think about those, where there really is no frontage requirement. There's a small frontage requirement now. Originally, there wasn't. But, you know, there's very little frontage requirements. The density is compressed, the open space is left surrounding the units. We're all aware of how the clusters work. But I would point out, think of how good they work, and do they need 250 feet of frontage to accomplish, to accomplish, if you will, a single-family residential goal? They do not. Again, the size of lot, shape and configuration, we believe that the frontage element is certainly not violated with this proposal. Any questions by the Board? Substantial justice. Again, you know, the Malachi case, a number of years ago, that, in 2007, the guiding rule that came out of it was, you know, "Any loss to the individual in making the variance request is outweighed, is outweighed by any gain to the public." And we're not talking the abutters. The abutters certainly have concerns, but is it outweighed by some public benefit? If, if you don't have that when you balance, it is an injustice to the owner of the property. That's a follow-on to the Simplex case, where the Supreme Court clearly enunciated to Boards, you need to respect these property rights. You need to take a look carefully at what the request is. Is it reasonable? Does it make sense? And here that it does. The factors that we're looking at, it's permitted in the zone? Yes. Does it threaten public health or general welfare? No. Does it create a neighborhood imbalance? No. And I'm looking at things that would affect the public, the public interest, if you will. As I pointed out, we could get more lots with a different plan. We choose not to do that. We think that this is a fair balance based upon the acreage, and we think it should be supported. This plan also creates open space by using this design and benefits the abutting lots. You know, people have land, they want to develop and use the land. My client is being sensitive and trying to do what he can to try and soften the landing, so to speak, as it relates to abutters. But clearly, he's entitled to develop his land in a way that makes some sense and is fair and is reasonable. We don't think that there's going to be any issue with that particular criteria. We think a denial would result in a loss to the applicant and the general public, since one of the alternates that I've shown you isn't the best plan. So, I think we need to look at that, and we appreciate the Board's consideration of that particular factor. Any questions about that? Diminution of value of surrounding properties. It ain't going to happen. 59 acres, 11 new lots, we're going to maintain buffering, it's a permitted use, single-family residential. The frontage issue does no impact on the abutters. It has none. It's inside the subdivision. It's not something that anyone, quite frankly, is even going to notice, with all due respect to everybody. And certainly, the small amount of deficiency on Lot 1 and the road isn't going to be noticed. And certainly, if I stuck that gore into Lot 2, no one's going to see it, no one's going to notice it. It, it doesn't do anything to satisfy any diminution theory or requirement. The frontage variance will have no impact on the abutters. We're, again, backing off a through-road plan that might have more impact. All of the other requirements are met. The use is allowed, it's consistent with the area, the lot sizes are clearly consistent with the area, and most cases exceed what's there. And, again, the buffering is part of the plan. We believe that there's no way that we could, you know, really think of this, you know, lowering surrounding property values based upon the way we've, I say, carefully looked at this, looked at the land and planned it. Any questions about that? Apparently not. Hardship. You know, again, thank goodness for the new hardship criteria. I started my discussion with that. When we look at it now, it's owing to the special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area. Denial of the variance would result in a unnecessary hardship, and there are a couple of factors to look at, if you will, when you make that definition. We believe the property is unique in geometry and size. No other lot in this area is like this one. In fact, there are very few lots that abut two, two roads. As I've, I've shown you, we could create this through road to another road in the area. You know, the particular layout that we're able to make of the lot. This lot is unique. It allows us to develop this land in a way that's consistent with zoning, in a way that meets the spirit of the ordinance, and we believe that, again, the amount of frontage that we actually have is, is, is certainly something that's a little bit different from some of the other parcels in the area. You know, how many parcels in this area can we put a road through like Plan B shows? There aren't many. And how many parcels with this particular shape that I can create the open space to keep areas for abutters and a grid subdivision? Very unique, because of the way it's laid out, where the soils are, how the soils are in the lot. The engineers were able to do what we're showing you tonight. So, we believe clearly that that factor is there. The frontage request does not violate the general public purpose of the ordinance. The size and boundaries are there. And, again, other parcels may not be possible. A square parcel, we probably would not have the geometry. So, if you're showing me a square, you know, 60-acre parcel, very likely the geometry and other matters that I'm showing you here probably wouldn't exist. The second criteria, the proposed use is reasonable. Well, clearly, it's reasonable. It's a single-family residential zone, single-family residential lot. The size, for the most part, is, is, is appropriate. The only distinction, again, of the three frontage lots is in that one small lot size variance that we're requesting. We believe it preserves buffering, it provides safe access, and, again, less roadway to maintain. We think that clearly the use is reasonable. I'm not going to get into the B part of hardship. It says if A1 and A2 are not established, explain how unnecessary hardship will be deemed.
Attorney, Attorney Michael, let me, does anybody on the Board have any question regarding hardship at this point, as, as far as moving forward? Or is everything satisfied with the first part of hardship?
Satisfied.
Satisfied?
All right, then, I'm, I'm not going to go there. I don't need to.
Yep.
Again, I've spent a few minutes with you folks, and, and we appreciate it. I thank you for listening, and we hope that the Board can act favorably on this. We think this is very important, very important, because this Board is helping to, again, interpret hardship, interpret these criteria, to do what I say is the right thing with this parcel. Thank you.
Any questions for Attorney Michael or Fieldstone Land Consultants on the Board? Tony?
No.
Lenny?
Brett? No, I, just real quickly, was this the, formerly the Jones property?
I haven't.
No?
It isn't.
Just curiosity.
My client's telling me it isn't, it's not. I haven't done a title lately, so I don't know.
Just curiosity.
All right, gentlemen, if there's no question?
We're all set.
All right?
Thank you.
Thank you. So, I'm going to open this up to the public. Before we, before I ask for people who would speak in favor or speak against, I know that that this, this has been in front of the Planning Board, and that abutters have had concern regarding water. And, and there's been several discussions regarding water usage, and, and that is not the germaine of the zoning Board. That is the, that is the Planning Board. So, anybody that would like to speak for or against this, and I will get to you, this is regarding the variances for frontage only, not the water. The water is, is not the germaine of the zoning Board. Again, that is, that is, that's the Planning Board, and that is something that needs to be discussed with the Planning Board. The zoning Board doesn't make any rulings on water usage or wells or anything to that extent, and I've read the Planning Board notes. So, with that being said, I'll open up the public hearing. Anybody that'd like to speak in favor of this variance? If you'd like to step forward, please, if you could step forward? Speak in favor, if you could just sign in and state your name for the record, please?
I'm an abutter on 119 Wilson Hill Road.
Okay.
I've worked with Brett and other neighbors on the street about trying to figure a way to make this development kind of, yes, we are the, some of the water people, but it's basically to, to try to limit any kind of, I guess, problems between the properties where they're located at. And, and he's really worked pretty hard to get this planned together, so we have some area around us that maybe would help us down in the lower end with water issues, because we were concerned with every house being that close. So, I fully support him putting that area around the house, trying to bring the property lines back to give us a little space, because it's really pretty hard up there finding water. So, I mean, more space between our wells and his property for whoever's building would be greatly appreciated, so.
So, so that plan right there where the buffer is?
Yes.
Because I'm looking at it, is that something that you're?
Plan A, the one there.
Yep.
We worked with them, and through all these plans, we've been up there trying to figure out a way to try to limit the impact of a development on there. I mean, nothing will be perfect, because everybody up there is under the same situation in that area.
Mm-hmm.
So, of the plans that he's put forward, this is the plan that I see as working best for us and our house.
Okay.
So, and I'm just speaking for myself, but, yeah, we have been working with him and walking the property, trying to figure out what would be a, a way to lessen the impact on us and our location, so.
Excellent. Well, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Any questions on the Board? Well, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that'd like to speak in favor of this plan? Okay. Is anybody that'd like to speak against this plan?
Name is Tony Capuccio, I'm an abutter, live at 111 Wilson Hill Road.
Okay, yep. If you could just sign, if you could just sign in, we'd be more than glad to hear, hear your conversation.
I don't know whether I'm speaking for it or against it. It's primarily a list of questions and considerations for this board and, and any coordination it may need to do with respect to the planning board. I don't know exactly how that works.
I'll try to answer your questions as best I can.
Okay. What is the under, this is, this is more on the philosophy of, of the zoning board criteria.
Can you speak into the mic?
Sorry.
Yeah, there you go, thank you.
What is the underlying rationale for having lots of a hundred K square footage and two hundred and fifty square, two hundred and fifty-foot frontage?
The, the rationale with those, so, a lot of those guidelines, requirements for lot size, they were set out by the town about ten, twenty years ago, right?
But the question is, why? I mean, one of the arguments, one could say, hundred, hundred square, hundred thousand square feet might be due to the limited permeability of the soil.
I, right, I, I don't know the arguments based upon that.
And I couldn't find online the rationale for that, nor the two hundred and fifty-foot frontage.
Mm-hmm.
So one of the requirements is for the, the proposer, the developer, to state why those requirements don't apply in this particular case. And I guess I really haven't heard the answer. If they, assuming that those numbers were not picked by the town arbitrarily, there must be a rationale for them, right? So when one goes to, for a variance, one should explain why the variance shouldn't apply in this case. And I guess I haven't full, haven't heard a full description of why that is.
So, so, let's take these one at a time.
It's primarily a soils-based zoning aspect of the ordinance.
For the hundred thousand, what's the frontage issue?
And that would be for adequate space and buffering. So there's one variance for lot area, which speaks to the hundred thousand, and then there's three for frontage.
So the frontage is merely for buffering?
Space and buffering, yeah.
Okay. The second point is, this is the fourth conceptual plan that has been presented to the town, and you said you reviewed the planning board issues. This particular plan, this, I forget what do you call it, Option A or whatever, is supposed to ameliorate but not eliminate several serious concerns that the planning board and the abutters had, which is primarily water availability and quality, i.e. runoff from septic system. So this plan, in a certain sense, is somewhat linked to concerns on the planning board side, basically that buffer zone area.
Mm-hmm.
So if this fourth plan, if the variances are approved, are to provide a seventy-five-foot buffer zone with the abutters so that the existing and new wells may, may not be as likely to interfere with each other, but the developer, in his discussions with the abutters, also stated that he will not allow any blasting so that existing wells are not affected, overbuild septic systems so that any contaminant of existing well water will be less likely. So my question is, and I don't really know.
If I can answer this one, because it sounds like this is outside of my germaine, but go ahead, ask your question.
Right, but it's, but it's linked with the planning board, and I guess it's a question more of how you, since this zoning, the, the variances being asked here are intimately linked with concerns that the planning board brought up, i.e. with regards to water and water quality. So how will these additional constraints be captured and become legally binding?
That's a planning board. That, that, right there, that is, that is, that is def, that is planning board, and I wouldn't have privy to discuss that. And I say, privy is the wrong way, wrong word to use. I wouldn't be, I would be out of line to discuss that, because it's not in, in my area of jurisdiction as far as zoning. As far as what we're looking at here is, we are, we're looking at the lot size and the frontage. The, and I understand where you're questioning and where you're coming from, and that would be best taken up with, with, with the planning board more so than us. Unfortunately, I can't make a call on that.
And as I said, I was, I'm neither speaking for nor against this particular thing. It was basically to ask some questions and to get into the record that there is a linkage here between what is being proposed and concerns that the planning board has raised.
And I, and I understand where you're coming from, I appreciate it, and I am glad it is, it is in record, and I'm sure it will be addressed before final proposal is, is put forward.
That's it.
But thank you.
Any questions? Any other questions?
Questions? Thank you. Jillian, is this, this goes back to planning after us, right?
Yes, it does.
Okay. I actually, I did actually have a question for Attorney Mike. Oh, actually, let me, before I get back to, is there anybody else that'd like to speak against this? Okay, I'm going to close.
You want a question?
Yeah, I did have a question, I'm sorry. Thank you for reminding me. So I did have a question in regards, and I'm not sure if you can answer it, or if Fieldstone can answer it. Is, are all these, are all these homes, are they gonna have, is it all gonna be wells? I'm, I'm just kinda concerned, yeah.
The, the answer's yes. I mean, we're gonna keep them as, as you, as this kind gentleman noted, we have been working to address some of those issues, but we plan on using wells. We don't, we brought a well expert to the planning board the last meeting. I don't know how much of that.
And yeah, and I was reading all of those notes, so.
And, you know, wells are wells, they're all over Merrimack, they're all over a lot of areas, we know that. And our intent is to use wells, and we intend to do our best not to impact other people's wells.
Okay.
Wells are wells, I don't know what to.
I didn't, I didn't know if, I didn't know if they're running, they were gonna run a line, or if that area was gonna get a liner. But I just want, if it's wells.
One of our reasons for not doing the through-road is we reduce the lots by five.
Yeah, okay.
But anyway, yeah, I did appreciate the comments of the, of the folks that came up, especially the last gentleman. We are sensitive to those things. We can't run drainage under their properties, we can't impact their septics with drainage, we can't do those things. As the board is well aware, the planning board will be looking at an engineering review of this particular site in terms of development, so.
And that'll be the next step.
That's the next step. We, we can't do this without them.
Okay.
What we need is the variances that we've talked about to do what we feel is the best plan.
Okay.
Simple as that, thank you.
Well, thank you. Is there any other questions for Attorney Michael and Fieldstone Consultants?
No.
All right, thank you very much, gentlemen. All right, is there any other questions coming from the public? Okay. I'm gonna close the public hearing and open up for deliberations. Lenny, Tony, Brett?
Where?
Discussions, thoughts? Starting with you, Lenny.
Pretty straightforward. Any street that has a cul-de-sac, at the end, you're gonna end up with lots that have less frontage.
Put your mic down.
It's on.
All right.
We see them all the time. It's just short on frontage, the lots have got the right square footage.
All right.
Well, you know.
Okay. Tony?
It seems like this is the best plan, and the people in the neighborhood, I would, as one gentleman came up, said he's kinda accepting this type of a plan here, so the people in the neighborhood seems like that this is the plan and the goal, so.
Do you agree with me? Brett, any questions?
I just wanna say, I think it's a great plan, and I didn't see a lot of people stepping up to the microphone complaining that it was going in, so.
Definitely seems like they've worked with the developers. And also, this isn't the last step for everyone who's here, this isn't the last step. Obviously, the next step is an engineering and overall review with the planning board for final. This isn't in, so, any other concerns regarding wells, waters, runoff, stuff like that is something that planning will be able to address for you in detail. So with that being said, do I have a motion?
Would you like one?
Please.
I, I will make the motion to approve the variance by Chad Brannan, P.E. of Fieldstone Land Consultants, P.L.C., petitioner, and Brett W. Vaughn, revocable trust owner, requesting the variance under Section 3.02 of the zoning ordinance to permit a twelve-lot subdivision with a lot in an area of eighty-nine thousand seven hundred and thirty-three square feet, whereas a hundred thousand square feet is required, a lot with frontage of a hundred and seven point eighty feet, whereas two hundred and fifty feet is required, a lot with a frontage of seventy-five feet, where two hundred and fifty feet is required, and a lot eight with frontage of eighty-nine point twenty feet, whereas two hundred and fifty feet are required. The parcel is located at 123 Wilson Hill Road in the R1 Residential District by zoning map. Tax map 4A, Lot 023, case numbers 2016-32, 33, 34, and 35.
Go to this one here.
And should the board vote to grant the variance, staff recommends the applicant show obtaining a subdivision approval from the planning board for the proposed twelve-lot subdivision. Is that the only item on there?
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Zero.
So we have four, zero, zero. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
I appreciate it, thank you.
All right, so, next item is Peter McClintock, of McClintock Real Estate, Inc., petitioner, owner, variance under Section 2.02.13E-46 of the zoning ordinance to permit a two-family residence eleven feet from the side property line, whereas fifteen feet is required. The parcel is located at 448 Daniel Webster Highway in the C2 General Commercial and Aquifer Conservation and Town Center Overlay Districts. Tax map 5D-4, Lot 053, case number 2016-60, dash, thirty-six. Mr. McClintock?
Yes.
Yeah, before you start, I do wanna know that we have four people on the board, so you do need to get a majority vote. If you do get two for, two against, and it results in a, in a deadlock, the, the variance will be denied.
Would I be able to come back and reapply?
I do.
So you have the option to continue to the next meeting if you would rather have a full board. If it is denied tonight, your first step would be an appeal of that decision, which would come back to this board.
I, I didn't notify, I didn't notify Attorney Michael, but he actually reminded me. I just wanna make sure, I wanna make you aware, because you do have the option to continue for a full board.
I'll continue.
This evening?
Yes.
Okay, then I will, why don't you give me kind of, or give us a, kind of a little five-minute overview, and then get into the five points.
What I'm looking to do, there's a small little, property's located at 448 DW Highway, it's kind of in between Canales Plaza and One Source Security, kind of across the street from Lobster Boat. There's an existing twenty-two-by-thirty Cape-style property that's in total disrepair, so I'm looking to demolish that building and build a two-family property there. The current structure is really about four of the six feet away from the south property line, so what I'm looking to do is to get the variance for the north side of the property line, a four-foot variance. So the lot is narrow, it's a fifty-foot wide lot by two hundred feet. And what the current, in the town overlay, it would only permit a twenty-foot wide structure. So, and it's very difficult to build any property that's a functional floor plan with a twenty-foot wide structure, so I'm looking to get that four-foot variance.
Okay.
It's like a little house tucked in between two big.
Yeah, it's a very, they're almost touching right now. Yeah, you could almost reach out the windows and.
So like the big city.
Yeah.
Well, if you'd like to get into the five points, we're gonna stop after each point in case there's any questions.
Okay. Do I, do I read the whole question first, or just my answers?
If you'd like, you can, yeah, I would be great, yeah.
Okay, granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest, because the proposed two-family would reduce the existing nonconformity, increase the distance between the property and the abutting property to the south. The existing property is about six feet from the abutting property, the town overlay district allows residential uses, and there are several multifamily homes in the area.
Any questions? Any questions? All right, you number two.
Okay, the spirit of the ordinance is observed, because the proposed property would enhance the appearance of the area, increase property values in the area, it would not, and would not change the character of the neighborhood.
Any questions? Proceed.
Granting the variance would do substantial justice, because it would allow reasonable use of the property, provide more rental housing in the town center. In addition, the proposed property would replace an existing property in poor condition.
Questions?
Mm-mm.
Continue.
The values of the surrounding properties would not be diminished, because proposed property would not diminish the character of the neighborhood, which includes multifamily homes, and the proposed property would enhance the values in the area.
Continue.
No fair or substantial relationship exists between the general public purpose of the ordinance provision and specific application of that provision to the property, because the current setback requirements severely restrict the development of the lot. The lot is fifty feet wide, and with the current setback requirements, it would only allow for a twenty-foot wide building. A variance is needed to build a property with a functional layout.
Number two.
The proposed use is reasonable one, because it is allowed in the town overlay district.
So, is this a two-story building?
Yes.
So it's a two-story building, so you have two houses, so it's a house, apartment, house up top or bottom?
It's, it's, I'm gonna be proposing to build a twenty-four-by-fifty-six-foot building.
So it's gonna be like a duplex?
Yeah, a duplex, with a, a first floor and a second floor.
For each family?
For each family, yeah.
But not, not like, so, you know, one family up top, one family at the bottom, not one family, not side by side, but over, under?
Correct, yep.
Gotcha.
Yeah, each family would have two floors.
Right.
All right, and then you're allowing for six spaces?
Correct.
Okay. I take it with a house that's there now, is, there's adequate, what, sewage and water, it's a town water?
It's serviced by town water and sewer, and natural gas that's in the area.
That is in poor condition.
You have, oh, you, I'm looking at one of the plans here. First floor plan, you have stairs.
Yep.
Are you gonna hit?
In the back or the front you're talking about?
Well, it looks like you have a common entry, and then you have stairs.
Mm-hmm.
That, they, can you access, are they, are these gonna be able to access each other?
Um, the way the, the floor plan's gonna be, there's gonna be a front common foyer, if you're up on the Daniel Webster Highway side, there'll be a common, like, foyer area there, which will have, you can go into the first floor unit, or they'll take the staircase up to the second level, and then in the back of the building, for the first floor unit, you'll be able to just come right into the back, and then there'll be a separate staircase going up to the second floor. So there'll be an egress in the front, an egress for the back for the, each unit.
And the house that's on the, the people on the first floor will have access to the basement by the looks of it?
Um, correct, they're each gonna have access to the basement.
Oh, okay.
The people in the front will have access from their, like, living room area, and then on the second-floor apartment, the way it's designed, there'll be like a little dog shed dormer going off to the back, and they'll have the staircase that will wrap around. So we're gonna design the building that they each get half of the basement for storage.
Okay. Yeah, it's gonna be nicer than what's there now.
So technically, they're gonna have, technically, they'll have three floors, the basement, the first floor, and the second floor.
Right, they'll have half the basement. Each one of the tenants would have half the basement.
Okay. All right. Excuse me. Any other questions from the board? Tony?
No.
Okay, I'll open this up, public hearing. Is there anybody that'd like to speak for this petition? Anybody like to speak against this petition? All right, close the public hearing. Any other questions from the board? No, good. Deliberations, discussions, motion?
I make a motion. Here's the motion. I make a motion, do we, we grant the variance under Section, whatever, I'm in the wrong folder. I'm, I'm in the wrong.
This one.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
I took the wrong one. I make a motion that we grant the variance under Section 202.3E-46 of the zoning ordinance to permit a two-family residence eleven feet from the side property line, whereas fifteen feet is required. The parcel is located at 448 Daniel Webster Highway in C2 General Commercial Aquifer Conservation in Town Center Overlay District, tax map 5D-4, Lot 053, case 2016-36.
Second. Oh, I'm sorry.
Brett, seconds?
Uh, just a minute, one more thing, Mr. Chairman. Should the board vote to grant the request, the ver-
Should the board vote to grant the request, the variant staff recommends the approval be conditioned upon obtaining an update right-of-way permit from the public water department, if the applicant, for any amount of auction to the access to DW Highway.
You know, did they, they apprise, do you have that, apprise?
Well, I saw it in the notes, but I don't, I'm not 100% sure what that means.
The Public Works Department might require a right-of-way permit, an updated one, but that would be if it's determined applicable, so we would have to speak with them to determine if it's applicable.
So if it's applicable, you need to go to the Water Works, Department of Water Works to...
Public Works.
Public Works, sorry, to get the, all right. Do I have a second?
I did second.
You have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Four, zero, zero. Congratulations. Good luck. Have a good night. Oh, I'm sorry, did you sign it?
I did.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Have a great night. Okay, on to number two, next one is...
Skip.
Nope. Jen, Jen Robichard of Barlow Signs, petitioner and hotel at Daniel Webster LLC owner, variance under section 17.10.3 of the zoning ordinance to permit the addition of a 48-square-foot sign to an existing ground sign whereas the combined square footage of the existing signage already exceeds the permitted allowance by the sign ordinance. The parcel is located at 248 Daniel Webster Highway in the I-1 Industrial and Aquifer Conservation Districts. Tax map 3D-2 lot 005-01, case number 2016-37. Gentlemen, obviously, I, you were here to hear me, the last, there are four people on the board, you do need to get a majority, you can postpone to when we have a full board, but if we do get, if you get a two-two, gay nay, the motion is denied. So, just, you have, and just want to make sure you're aware of this.
Yes, sure. We'll proceed.
Okay. And I have one question for Community Development before us. This, how did, did this, I know there were some signing, there was signage requirements that were changed. How does this affect that, and did this come in before or after that?
This does not affect that. The signage changes to the ordinance did not have anything to do with size, and that's what this pertains to tonight.
Okay, great. Gentlemen?
Sure. My name is Paul Martin. I'm here for Jen Robichard from Barlow Signs. So what we're looking to do is, recently, there's a restaurant that opened up at the Residence Inn. We're looking to add additional signage to advertise their services.
Okay.
Okay. I can go on to, like, criteria?
That would be great, and we'll probably have, we may have questions after each one.
Sure, no problem.
Thank you.
Okay, for number one, granting the variance would not be contrary to public interest because proposed addition to the existing sign is minimal and within the scale of the existing pylon sign. The addition of two small panels will not significantly alter viewership of the site of the public and therefore will not be harmful or contrary to the public interest. The public appreciates signage that is in harmony with its surroundings, and our proposal assists the wayfinding public in identifying the services of the Residence Inn in a clear and clean way.
Any questions? Continue.
Okay. Number two. The spirit of the ordinance will be served because our proposal will not adversely affect the surrounding properties of the Residence Inn, nor will our new sign threaten the public's safety or welfare. Letting the public know this property now has a fully functioning restaurant does not contradict the spirit of the ordinance. Clarifying what type of overnight services are provided also does not contradict the spirit of the ordinance, ordinance as minimal, as our minimal proposal supports the ordinance's attempt to help the business identify their services.
Questions? Proceed.
No.
Okay, on to number three. Granting the variance would do substantial justice because the public needs the viewing time. The sign will allow motorists traveling on a very busy and fast-moving Daniel Webster Highway. Our sign will help motorists understand the uniqueness of this property, that the Residence Inn Merrimack allows for extended services, which is different from hotels that provide minimal amenities, and that the site is now offering an onsite restaurant, open to guests of the hotel, but also open to the public. This is a special situation where a restaurant is now being added to an existing business that motorists would not think would have onsite food services for the public who are not staying at the facility. Without identification, the public won't know this local business is an option for their dining choices.
No.
Number four.
The values of the surrounding properties will not be diminished because the Residence Inn is located in a highly traveled thoroughfare surrounded by businesses. The addition of minimal signage that helps motorists to quickly identify the services of this location and to safely enter the property will in no way diminish surrounding properties. A successful hotel and restaurant benefits surrounding properties.
Questions?
Yeah, I'm going to hold off to, to the end, I've got a couple.
Number five?
Sure. Owning to special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area, denial of the variance will result in unnecessary hardship because the Residence Inn site is unique in that signs on the property attempt to attract motorists who are typically not Merrimack residents. The Inn's success thrives on its ability to attract the wayfinding public so that it identifies the site when its services are needed and also when they are not. Many customers will see the Residence Inn pylon sign and remember the unique services offered in Merrimack for future use. The addition of identification for the Fig and Olive will announce to the public that an onsite restaurant is available to them, a new business hoping to grow and prosper in Merrimack. Without signage, motorists would not consider the site for dining decisions, and the Fig and Olive could certainly not survive on catering to the customer staying at the Residence Inn exclusively. No fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public purpose of the ordinance provision and the specific application of the provision to the property because the Residence Inn site is unique. The size of the property, its location on the high-speed, high-volume thoroughfare, its need to attract typically non-resident clientele, and the addition of a new restaurant to the public will only become aware of through proper identification, all speak to the need of additional signage.
And then number two.
Sure. The proposed use is a reasonable one because for a large-scale extended-stay hotel, making the move to add restaurant services to want to identify their new services, it is reasonable to think that the majority of the people traveling to Daniel Webster Highway currently recognize the Residence Inn location. What they need to, well, what they will need to know, should this variance be granted, is clearly that the site is a distinct away-from-home experience which offers an onsite restaurant open to the public.
So no, this is the, and thank you very much, so this is the sign that's on DW Highway, not Ever Turnpike. There's no, there's no Ever Turnpike sign, so we're just talking DW Highway?
Correct.
Okay. Board members, questions? Tony?
The sign that's here, it's in the packet, is that the sign that you're considering? The, the sign that's here in the packet?
Correct, the larger pylon sign.
Yeah. What does it say, restaurant? I don't see, it says the sign is going to try to get people to know there's a restaurant there, but I don't see no sign, no, I'm just curious, there's no...
Sure, and, and speaking with my client earlier, we were speaking of that, and we would, we would definitely change it over to have a restaurant added to that, instead of just saying the Fig and Olive. We could work with the artwork to include the word restaurant.
So that sign's going to be a little bigger?
We would keep the sign the exact same size as what it is.
Same size?
Smaller, much smaller letters, though.
Possibly. We might be able to work with the panels. Currently, the extended-stay panel and the Fig and Olive panel, they share the sign, but if we were to make a smaller panel up top, we'd have more room for a restaurant at the bottom.
Or if you just got rid of the extended stay and put the Fig and Olive and then put restaurant below it, would work as well.
It would.
Okay. Because, and the only reason, the only reason I say that is because, you know, you're looking to advertise the restaurant. I mean, Residence, extended stay seems like a little extra. And, and I mean, it still, it's 12 feet off the ground, so it's not like we're talking something that's sitting right on the ground and obstructing traffic view.
Sure.
But, you know, if you, if you're going to get the nitty-gritty of it, but...
If I could just reply to that, so currently, the sign is a very attractive sign right now, but it does fail to mention that it is an extended stay. It does say you're, you're home with hotel services, which I think you have to read into it slightly to understand that it is an extended stay, which is one of the reasons why we wanted to keep that on the sign.
Okay. Tony, you have any questions?
That's what I was curious about.
Yes, please, if I may.
Well, yes, by all means.
He, my husband and I lived at the Residence Inn for almost a year when our house flooded. And at that time, they served breakfast and a small buffet supper or dinner, whatever you want to call it. And I know when, oh, Rib Fest and some other things were in town, and now that we have the premium outlets, and that's one of the places to stay. And when the hotel was almost full, I mean, we pulled in with our own vehicles and we had no place to park, people were parking on Route 3. And now you're going to advertise a restaurant, and if you have, let's say, 75% occupancy or 80%, what are you going to do with the overflow of cars?
Well, we, we've already re, we're in the process of restriping the lines and reallocating the parking spaces, which created more parking spaces. Right now, I mean, we have been 100% full on many occasions, and parking hasn't been an issue. You know, enough spaces for everyone to park there.
Oh, I understand that, but you haven't advertised the restaurant yet. What I'm saying is, if you have the, say, 100% occupancy, you have people coming in for the restaurant, where are all these cars going to park? Because during the winter, we had a hard time because of where they had to put the snow and stuff, also was taking up parking spaces.
So I'll just state for the record that they have been before the planning board, and they have been determined to meet the parking requirements.
Okay.
Just to put that in there.
All right.
Any other questions from the board? All right, I'm going to open the public hearing. Is there anybody that'd like to speak for this petition? Okay. I do have a letter that is from Todd S. Wilson, Diversified Funding Incorporated. I'm going to read this into the record, so just give me a moment. Town of Merrimack, regarding 246 Daniel Webster Highway, to whom it may concern. The purpose of the request for a small additional sign located on the existing pylon sign is to help a new business prosper and is in place to service our guests staying at Residence Inn Daniel Webster. We have established a relationship with an outside company, the Fig and Olive, to provide quality food service to our guests and the local community. The owners of Fig and Olive are locals who live in Merrimack, and we want them to succeed. We are providing the Fig and Olive free rent as well as paying for all their utilities as we want them to succeed and become a valuable asset to the community at the Residence at Daniel Webster. Without proper signage, we fear that they may not succeed, and we will lose them after, and after a lot of time, capital, and effort to improve the property and existing hotel business, losing a great food provider for our guests would likely hurt our business as well. He provides his contact information, and again, this is Todd S. Wilson, Diversified Funding Incorporated. I wanted to read that into the record. Is there anybody else that wants to speak in favor, or anybody that would like to speak against? Okay, now I will close the public hearing. Any final questions, concerns, deliberations, motions?
Excuse me, Jill, did you say that in front of the planning board, they have, the parking has been, been talked, and?
Yes, it has.
It has, and it's, the planning board, it's okay with their description, the construction of the...
Yes, they have a waiver, a full site plan review.
I'm sorry?
They had a waiver, a full site plan review.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, concerns? Motion?
Mr. Chairman, make a motion, variance under section 17.10.3 of the zoning ordinance, excuse me. Ordinance to permit the addition of 48 square-feet sign to exist the ground sign whereas the combined square footage of the existing sign, a sign that already exists, the permit allowing by the sign ordinance. Parcel is located at 248 Daniel Webster Highway in the Industrial and Aquifer Conservation Districts. Tax map 3D-2 lot 005-01, case 2016-37.
Does it, motion?
Oh, there is a motion in the back?
No, 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 was, you making the motion for or against?
For.
For, I'm sorry, I didn't hear the first part. No, I don't think there was any other conditions.
No, I don't think there was.
Do I have a second? Okay. Okay, Lenny, seconds?
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Obsteing?
I'm going to abstain.
Three, zero, one. Motion's passed. You have 30 days for somebody to, you have 30 days before somebody can come back and appeal, so if you proceed with construction within 30 days, it's at your own risk after that. Good luck with the restaurant. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. That was three, zero, one. And last but not least, and thank you very much for your patience, Skip John M. Moyer, Jr. of Skipper's Marine Corporation, petitioner owner, variance under section 3.02A, note three of the zoning ordinance to permit parking within a 50 feet of Daniel Webster Highway whereas 50-foot setback is required. The parcel is located at 54 Daniel Webster Highway in the I-1 Industrial and Aquifer Conservation Districts. Tax map 2D lot 029, case number 2016-38. As I had mentioned before, there are four people on the board. You can delay your petition a month, or if, when we have a full board, or you could sit down in hearing, but you do have to get consensus.
I'd like to proceed if I could, please.
By all means, if you could please sit down and sign in, and we will start. If you want to get right into the five points, we can discuss that, and we may have questions for you after each point.
I do not have my application to read off each one of those sentences. When I applied my application, I didn't realize I needed to get a copy of that to announce each one of those questions.
If you hold on a second, Jillian should have an extra copy.
Do you have some photographs of...
We do, we already have photos. We unfortunately can't take anything in the night of the meeting, but we do have, we do have a site plan, and we do have some, some overheads.
Okay.
So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
So if you just want to read each, each one through five, stop after each one, we may have questions for you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, well, I don't have as much experience as some of the other people before me, but I will read what I have written.
That's okay, that's okay.
Uh, granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest. The public would benefit by the ability to see the boats for sale and to allow them to have their boats brought in when needed for vacations, for weekend pleasure, family outings, to be able to maintain their property, vessels, to accommodate municipal boats who need quick service, fire department, police department, so on, and to keep customers from parking in-road and to, you know, manage the yard better as a boatyard.
Any questions? All right, next.
The spirit of the ordinance is observed because I need as much boat parking as possible to manage all customers, need and maintain financial stability, to employ people, and to pay our bills. As I am a resident of Merrimack, New Hampshire, people, customers drop off their boats in circle, we park them each side, keeping the circle open. Boats in back of the building are storage, and in front are in, for services. Extra space for boats keeps us organized.
Any questions?
Is, is this parking for the boats or for the, for your customers?
You know, we have, our customers basically drop their boats off and go. They don't really stay. We don't really have automotive parking per se. I mean, there are some spots for automotive parking, but people pretty much drop their boats, like valet parking. They go around the circle. We use our fork truck or tractor to then put them in the appropriate spot based on their size, and it works quite well.
So this is for the boats, not for the, for your customers?
That's correct, this is just a boatyard storage.
Okay, thank you.
Do you carry any inventory for, you want to repair your own boat? Because I know my husband stopped in, we just stop in, pick up something and leave, so there's really no all-day parking in there for, for customers.
No, because typically we don't have people coming in to park and purchase or anything like that, it's mostly a service-oriented business. We typically will have one or two boats that might be on consignment, but we don't really concentrate on that, we're more about like being a boat hospital and servicing people's boats and getting them in and out as quickly as I can to, you know, accommodate their needs.
All right, thank you.
One more?
Yeah, sure.
What do you do with the boats now?
Right now, we're bringing them in to drain their blocks to keep them from freezing so that people don't lose their, you know, rather expensive boats and blocks break and things of that nature. So we have like some upticks due to seasonal needs, but there's also many, many months where the yard is quite, you know, slow. I don't know if that answered your question, but I mean, right now, we have, mostly we have boats going into storage in the back, we have a lot of people coming in with damage after a long summer, hitting rocks, things of that nature, looking to get service done now so they don't get caught up in the spring rush and put their boats to bed all fixed.
So some of the boats are stored for the, for the winter?
Yes, sir.
And other boats are repaired and the customer comes in and picks it up?
That's correct.
So what's your percentage of the boats and, that are stayed there and the boats that have been picked up and out, do you know?
You know, every year, like Mother Nature, it changes, I mean, sometimes we'll have maybe 10 or 15 boats in storage for the winter, and we'll have some boats that we take in free of storage to have projects to do over the winter, usually, you know, substantial deck jobs, transoms, electrical, motor installs, so it's, it's a mishmash of different things. I never know, it makes it interesting what I might have from year to year, and that balance of storage and repairs can change depending on economy and other factors, which definitely play into it, Mother Nature and the economy definitely play into my business to a great deal. But by having a small yard and not expanding more than what I have the space for right now, it keeps my quality assurance up. At my, I'm getting a little older and it, I've been doing this for 30 years, and it keeps me under control so that, you know, I can keep safety in mind and keep track of everything.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do you store any of the boats inside or are they all outside after they're shrink-wrapped?
Yeah, no, the space inside is so valuable, we typically just use that to do our repairs and get out of the weather and things like that, so the note boats get stored inside. There may be a, like I have a Boston Whaler right now that's been there for two or three months, you'd think it was in storage, but it's just a big project, you know, and once it's done, we definitely want our base bots back to get the next guy in, you know?
Okay, great. All right, if you proceed with number three?
Granting the variance would do substantial justice because it would keep our customers and workers safe with flexibility to organize yard as needed as boats come, so many different sizes, small aluminum boats, ski boats, fishing boats, bow riders, jet skis, cabin cruisers occasionally, canoes, and have many different widths and lengths. I need to be able to fit them where I think is best for all that need our services, which includes Babusak Lake, Merrimack River, our local ponds and lakes, and the region that our citizens live in.
Questions? Number four?
Number four. For the following reasons, the values of the surrounding properties will not be diminished. I have been here since 2004 and property in this area is going up at this time, and having another quality of life service locally benefits fire department, senior citizens and families that enjoy boating. This is a tough work and our community needs my services more than ever with our aging population. This makes my shop and services priceless to some degree in my mind and can only add value to the entire town of Merrimack.
Okay, questions? Number five?
Unnecessary hardship, I had to look up this word owning, because I wasn't sure what that was all about, but owning to special conditions of property that distinguish it from other properties in the area. Denial of the variance would result in unnecessary hardship because no fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public purpose of the ordinance provisions of the specific application of that provision of the property because my property is a narrow and like many properties within four miles either side of me on the Daniel Webster Highway. There are vehicles for sale that are closer to the road than my requests of proposed plan. This is an economic plus for them as it should be. My property is even narrower and being close, or is a, being closer is a great help to me and my family to be able to provide the business the way I see necessary.
And number two, the proposed use is a reasonable one?
Okay, so I read one and number two, okay, here we go. The proposed use is a reasonable one because it increases my sales opportunities to see where they can get marine services just by seeing the boats. It has no impact on visibility to the highway, it keeps boat management and the yard sufficient to stay in business, it looks more like a boatyard.
Excellent. Any questions, concerns? Because you don't have to read any further. Any questions from the board? Lenny?
Yeah, I have a little bit of a problem. The petition asks exclusively to permit parking within 50 feet of Daniel Webster Highway, but it doesn't give any definitive number as to, does that mean that they're gonna be within, up to the, to, to the, right to the right-of-way line? Or is there gonna be some buffer zone between right-of-way and where the boats are being stored?
I have the same question, I was looking at the plan here. It looks like you're gonna eliminate, are you eliminating the crushed gravel boat display area?
No.
Okay.
No.
Where, so, because the aerial shot I have looks like you're almost, you're right up to the road as it is.
Right.
So...
There's a fence, there's a gate.
Yeah, I saw that.
And back in '09, I got a verbal approval to rearrange my yard up to that gate, because back when I first built my property, it was more leaning towards boat building and doing larger boats, and then the economy that we went through kind of got rid of the boat building and I went more of a public service to, you know, smaller boaters and changed my dynamics of my business, which required more space for smaller boats. And, you know, I lined them up neatly around the circle, keep the circle open and the sides open, as they are tonight, and typically are during the evening, during the workday. Sometimes there's some movement of boats around to get things in and out, but basically not beyond that fence line, and I think my plan depicts that in the dotted lines, that that would be the boat storage area, and it just goes to that fence line where my gate is. On the other side of that gate are trees and grass, and it's, I'd say, I don't know where that 50-foot mark, is it from the center of the road, is it from the edge of the road? I'm not sure where that 50-foot point marks starts, but, you know, to the gate, I would guess it's gotta be 30 or 40 feet, so I'm really, you know, asking for about another 10, 20 feet somewhere in that vicinity.
Are you moving the gate closer to the road?
No, the gate's gonna stay right where it is.
Okay.
You know, I've actually been operating this way for, since I opened my business.
Right.
It's only come to like recently that I was violating that 50-foot mark, and up until now, I wasn't aware of that, but now I'm addressing it, but I've actually been operating this way for almost 12 years without any issues.
All right. So you're not, so it doesn't sound like we're really taking any more space. Am I missing something? Because I, the, what I have for a diagram wasn't that inclusive.
This is the subject of a service request that goes back a few years, and he's basically trying to legitimize something that's, he's been doing for a while.
And that's what, that's what I kind of thought and I wasn't sure. Okay. Sorry, so does that answer your question?
Can you see on the plan?
It appears by the aerial photograph that what we're being asked to do is approve what's being done right now.
Well, you got a verbal to do it, no, and I, and she just wants to put it legit.
Because the petition is gonna be going to back of the planning board anyways, the issue of putting a definitive number is probably set in their field anyways, so let's move along.
Can I ask a question?
Yep.
Wouldn't, on my plan, I did mark out the boat storage area that goes right to the fence area, which the fence already exists, I mean, that must be a distance depicted in your scale already.
Yeah, it's hard to tell on the copy that I have, but it looks like the gate's probably about 30 feet.
The aerial shot that we have is actually a better view of it, and it gives us a better idea. So, and, and that's what I was trying to, when you were speaking, I was trying to see where you were coming up with 50 feet, but Jillian cleared it up, it's, it sounds like this, this is a, something you got a verbal on years ago, you know, and, and looking to just put it legitimate, and that's, and I can understand, I respect that, that's fine. Any other questions, anything I missed, gentlemen? All right, so I'm gonna open this up to ladies, I'm sorry, I forgot Fran, any questions?
No, that's a close call.
And to open this up, anybody would like to speak for this petition? Anybody like to speak against this petition? Did you want to add anything on your father's behalf? No, you don't, okay. All right, so we're gonna close the public hearing. Discussions, deliberations, motions?
I'll make a motion, I don't know if there's much more discussion on this.
All right. Do it.
I will make the motion to grant the variance by Skip John M. Moore, Jr. of Skippers Marine Corp., petitioner owner, requesting the variance under section 3.02a note three of the zoning ordinance to permit parking within 50 feet of the Daniel Webster Highway whereas a 50-foot setback is required. The parcel is located at 54 Daniel Webster Highway in the I-1 industrial and aquifer conservation districts, tax map 2D lot 029, and case number 2016 dash 38, with the requirement that the petitioner shall obtain planning board approval for the proposed revisions to the site plan.
Understand?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Tony, second, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, abstain, four, zero, zero. You're all set? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
For sitting through this. It's always hard to get the last one out the door, so...
That's okay, it's been a long time coming. Thank you very much.
Have a good evening, you did sign in, you're all right?
I did, sir.
Okay, great, thank you very much, have a great night.
Oh, yes, thank you.
Possible discussion items, it looks like we have, Jillian, this here, what is this? This is a discussion of potential bylaw amendments?
Uh...
Oh, regarding members arriving late?
I think that was read last time.
Was this?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, September 21st. Well, you guys know your chairperson is highly organized. All right, so moving on. Approval of minutes, we have to, August 31st, we had to move those minute approval forward due to members present were not necessarily here, so do I have a motion on that?
I will.
Approval of minutes.
Make a motion to approve the minutes as printed of the August 31st, 2016 meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So it's three, zero, and then an abstention. So three, zero, one. All right, motion on or discussion regarding the approval of minutes for September 28th. You know, like, there's only three people can do this, and you two know who you are, so one of you thinks who wants to approve and...
I'll let Tony cough there, I'll make the motion again, to approve the minutes of the September 28th, 2016 meeting as printed.
You have no choice, you have to. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all...
Abstain.
And one abstention, Tony abstains, so it's three, zero, zero. Any other questions, concerns, anything anybody wants to discuss?
Has there been any bites on alternates coming on? Does anybody know, or...
Hasn't been advertised at all.
Hasn't been advertised at all?
I don't know, I haven't seen anything for it.
I haven't heard anything.
Haven't heard anything?
No.
Well, we need it badly.
Any alternates out there? Please feel free. All right, Tony?
Yes?
You know what I'm looking for, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you very much, see you all next month. All right, Fran, you gonna give me a telephone number?